Picking up? Got it? Okay. All right, I think we're about ready to call the order. If we could, Councilman Flurry, will you give the indication, followed by Councilman Bradford, will give us our call?
Let us pray. Our gracious God, we come to you today as a great city, and we pray, Lord, that you will help us to lift up and do the right things, make wisdom a part, give us knowledge, strength, and God, we pray for your grace. In these things we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us, uh, in unison.
A pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Pressler.
President.
Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Flurry.
Here.
Mr. Lynch. Ms. Lynch, that's her.
Here.
Mr. Vogel.
Here. All right. Tomorrow I'll entertain—
I don't get it.
Stephanie's dad in the seat. Tomorrow I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the administrative conference Friday, December 19th, and the city council meeting December 22nd, and Amendment Number Two from December 9th. And at this point, we are at awards recognition of distinguished guests and communications of the mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. At this time, we do not have any awards recognitions, and I don't know of any distinguished guests yet, but not today.
Wonderful.
I'm pretty sure we'll get to some of that.
Thank you, and we will—I'm sure we will all get accustomed to awarding, recognizing, and seeing our distinguished guests and communicating.
Thank you.
So, at this point, we do have the same opportunity for the city council members. We have awards and recognition of distinguished guests. And what I'd like for us to try to do—I know we've kind of gotten out of the habit of it, but if you can, on your panel is a request button. If you could, try to push that, and then we can recognize speakers in the order that they've entered, so that we can keep up with that. And so, I see Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow I'll be recognizing two Shreveport Airport Authority managers who have been awarded forty, under forty, recognition by the Airport Business Magazine, Downtown Airport Manager Stacy Kuba and Airport Project Manager Robert Austin.
Thank you so much, and I did get a chance to read that press release. It was a very, very good honor. Anybody else? I see none. We will move on to awards and recognition of distinguished guests from the mayor again. If you all have anything today, or we can—
We just got a couple announcements when you get to that portion.
Yes.
Okay. Are we there yet?
We are.
He's supposed to say communications.
So, the communications was the first part, but they both—
Wonderful.
They both say in their awards recognition of distinguished guests.
Oh, yes, okay.
One says communications, one doesn't.
All right.
So, we can combine those two to make it more seamless.
Sounds good to me.
But today, we're ready for communication.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the other members of the council. First, I want to welcome all of our citizens who are joining us today, either in person or over the Internet. It's always a pleasure to have you participate with us in this democratic process. One of the ways I want to make our operation more transparent to the council and to our citizens is by having our department heads provide scheduled reports throughout the year. These progress updates will be designed to keep you apprised of where things stand on the major projects happening all over our city. They will be brief but informative, and of course, will give you a chance to ask questions or request additional information. Tomorrow's presentation will come from Barbara Featherston, our Director of Water and Sewage. Ms. Featherston will update you on the progress with projects related to the consent decree, the rate increase, and some great news from EPA. We'll follow up on the 27th with an update on our street projects, and we'll keep—we'll just keep building from there. This is just one way to improve the level of communication from our office to the community. Hopefully, it'll go a long way toward educating our citizens regarding our processes and help make us even more transparent in how we operate. I also want to remind everyone that all city administrative offices will be closed next Monday, January 19th, in accordance with the Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. I know there will be various observances across the city and many opportunities to go out and serve, so for those who are so inclined, I encourage you to do that. That concludes our communications for today, Mr. Chairman, and to other members of the council.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tyler. Does anybody have any questions about the communications?
I'm just dying to hear good news from the EPA, so that's what I do. I appreciate your optimism.
Well, I tell you what, we got some good news, Councilman Jenkins.
Well, that is—you've whet our appetite. We'll anxiously await the report tomorrow.
Okay, all right. It'll be short, succinct, but give you an opportunity to ask questions.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, and tomorrow, on the reports, it looks like—and forgive me, I'm new to this, and I know they sort of roll on the—some are on—they're listed on every one of our agendas here, but some are in the first meeting, some are in the second. But it looks like tomorrow, we could expect a property standards report and a revenue collection report. I think we received that electronically today.
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman, and we'll take any questions tomorrow and make a few comments about the report, which I think looked good. Pretty good.
It was good. It was. And that's another thing, just for the new council members and those returning, if you did have any difficulty receiving that, just let us know, so we can make sure and work out. I know that it was received earlier today, but if, you know, your email may not be set up, or if you're having any trouble receiving things, you should have received a revenue collection report from the CAO's office earlier today. And then, let's see, we would have a surety bond forfeiture report tomorrow as well?
That's correct.
Yeah. And, okay. There's no public hearing tomorrow, so we'll move on to adding items to the agenda. And, Ms. Clerk, are there any items?
No.
Okay. We're not aware of anything to be added. Then, we will have public comments, confirmations. I know we did have—did you want to—
Yes.
Councilman Flurry had mentioned he may want to make a motion tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, it's my intent tomorrow to ask the council to suspend the rules in regards to Mr. William Bradford, Deputy City Attorney, and go ahead and accept that confirmation and approve it tomorrow.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I certainly support—
Councilman Bradford, yes.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. I just wanted to ask the administration mayor in particular, and I think I saw that correspondence about Mr. Bradford, and I welcome, but I was wondering if the scope of his duties had been defined, job description.
Yes, sir. It has been. And if I may just add, I am not asking you to suspend the rules. I wouldn't do that in the first meeting. That is something a Councilman Flurry is doing. I think my communication says 27. Am I correct?
Yes.
But I just want to have a chance to review—
We will. We will certainly—
What it is that—
That he'll be—
We're expanding that office, is that right?
Yes, sir. Well, we're not really expanding. We're reorganizing, and we will get into more of that with you. I'd love to speak with you, and I'd love to send you the job description. We do have that.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, it sounds like there is some interest in moving forward with this at tomorrow's meeting, so if y'all can make that job description available to the council—
We will.
—that's something we may be able to act on before the 27th.
Yes, sir. Go have it ready.
And, let's see. That being said, you should also have received another correspondence from the mayor's office about another confirmation scheduled for the 27th, and if there are any more, please let us know, and we'll receive those in time.
Thank you.
At that—at this point, there's no items under consent agenda tomorrow, and so we'll continue with items to be adopted.
Regent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, indeed.
Subsection Eight Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage Order, which will require only one reading. Resolution One suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter Ten and Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the Mardi Gras pre-party. Resolution Two approves the fees of professionals in conjunction with the issuance of not exceeding $27,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds in one or more series for the purpose of refunding certain existing indebtedness of the City of Shreveport and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Resolution Three authorizes the mayor to suspend certain provisions of certain chapters of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances to grant temporary approval for uses and operations related to the filming or production of movies within the City of Shreveport. Resolution Four suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter Ten relative to alcoholic beverages and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located at 6614 Yuri Drive for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. And Resolution Five allocates funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted in other charges in the general fund, general government, and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
If anybody has questions on these pieces of legislation, please log it in your request. I will say that I think there were some questions—I've heard some questions from a few council members about Resolution Number Three, maybe getting a little bit more detail about that. It is one that allows the city to make some decisions in a faster turnaround time with relation to the film industry.
That's exactly—
But if y'all could provide a little bit more detail about that, I think there—I did hear some questions from people about that, and if anybody has a specific one, please—
Let me ask, is it preferable to do it? We can have Arlena come. This is in conjunction with the film industry. Is it done every year? The current agreement ends in December 2014. This is a renewal of the practice that allows the mayor's office, in conjunction with film production, to suspend certain provisions, for example, closing off streets, providing things that are necessary to produce the movies without having to come back and get a council legislative action each time. We can bring Arlena tomorrow, or is it better to provide something in writing for the council, which—
Well, I think with so many new members, it may be helpful that we have Arlena come, and I'm open to that idea, but I think it would be helpful to maybe have her come and explain, you know, that this is a renewal and how this is operated in the past, so that people can be accustomed and comfortable with it.
We'll have her here tomorrow.
And I see Councilman Corbin.
I just had a question on Resolution Five, and I'm reading the backup to her right now. Is that—
I think it's the Air Show, Mr. Corbin, if I understand. I know it's sponsored by one of the council members, but I believe it's the Air Show.
It is the Air Show. That was basically done essentially the same way we did it last year. You know, I've noticed that we are not the biggest contributors in appropriate, but I do think we need to participate at some level, and so this is a number that we've used in the past, came in that time of the year where they were soliciting. So, that's how it came up.
Okay. And, that being said, just another brief matter as a, you know, as a kind of a matter of just how we might want to do things a little differently. There was some discussion with some of the council members about those items, where it appears there will not be much of an objection to them from any member. We might want to make a motion to move on several of those at the same time. And so, that being said, we may try that this week. And so, is there any—you know, are there any on here that we feel like—we feel pretty comfortable making a motion for, then we can make a motion of several at once? If there—you know, if somebody would like to break out and discuss them at one more at length, we can, you know, make a substitute motion or follow up on that. So, we may not do that this time, but I just want to put it on people's minds that that's been a suggestion, so be thinking in that mode, and we may even begin to use the consent agenda again, so—just as a point of information. And now, we are moving on to introduction of resolutions.
Just—sorry. Councilman Jenkins. Well, you know, we—I was using that for a while, but we had a little change. We had a little change.
Okay, we'll try.
Okay, you know, fixed my habit, and then I had to break it again, and I'm back. Okay. So, but that's in terms of taking up more in terms of the adoption portion.
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay. So, now, we are on introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to January 27th.
Resolution Six authorizes the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management. Resolution Seven authorizes the acceptance of a donation of a title sponsorship for the 2015 North Louisiana Economic Partnership Annual Meeting. And Resolution Eight authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Winchell and Joseph LLC.
Any questions on any of that? All right, moving on to introduction—
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's probably—I probably thought it was your last one.
Okay.
Councilman Jenkins.
So, the NLEP, it's a donation what—is it just to use—it—I mean, is it like a quick pro quo for the facility, and for some reason, it's better to do it as a donation?
No, sir. It's actually a specific donation on behalf of the city to be a title sponsor for their annual meeting. So, this is above and beyond the normal support that the city gives. It's really been funded by an outside entity, but as we appreciate the processes, it must come here and then actually go back to them.
Okay.
But it's specifically for a title sponsorship.
Okay, so that was really my—my real question is, though, except we're acting as a transfer agent sort of thing on this.
Have a pass through.
Okay. Got it. I wouldn't—the way I read it suggested that they were providing us the money back to the City of Shreve—NLEP, but that is not—
That is not the case.
Okay. And Clerk—
So, we will receive money from an outside agency, real money, that we will then transfer to them?
No.
On paper, yes, sir. On paper.
From NLEP.
Right. So, the funds—the funds are provided to NLEP, they'll come to the city, and basically goes back to the NLEP in order for the city to be a title sponsor for this event. Not the way—that's the way they wanted to do it, you know, not the way we perhaps would recommend it, but it's an effective way of doing what they want to accomplish, which is to make the city a title sponsor without the city having to actually spend funds.
And if I could—if I could just piggyback, Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we have been saying that we need to do is more economic development, and, you know, and I've spoken with some of you individually about our desire to do that, and in working with NLEP, Mr. Martinez is the executive director for that particular organization, we do provide funding every year to them. However, they receive donations from different other agencies and other municipalities around our city. So, in order for us to be a title sponsor, we would have had to pay another $20,000. And we want to make sure that we're on the radar for economic development. And in order to do that, what Scott has indicated to me is that we can take some of the funding that we've received from maybe some of the other organizations and see if they're willing to let the city be the title sponsor. So, our name get to be put, and our seal on all of the agendas, and we get to do what we want to do on this annual—at this annual meeting. And it's going to send a message to the community that we are in the game for economic development. And so, it's not any money that we're going to receive, but it's a title sponsorship, and in NLEP is willing to do that based on other funds that they've received from other organizations.
So, we're basically accounting for the value of the sponsorship?
Yes. Yes.
So, my question would be, Mr. Chairman. Yes. What is the $20,000 sponsorship? Besides our name being recognized, what would encompass $20,000? I mean, you have any—
Well, let me tell you what, Mr. Martinez, if I may answer—
Sure.
—as your mayor. Mr. Martinez has said the title sponsorship entity gets to have certain privileges at the annual meeting, and that privilege, we can introduce a guest speaker, or, you know, or we can have our logo put on the program. It just sends a message. Other entities do it all the time, but this year, because I've asked different organizations, and I've met with a lot of them in the last nine days, we're trying to make sure that we partner with people. We want to be at the table, and he said, "Okay, well, let me see if y'all can sponsor." I said, "Well, we can't give any more money. We've got too many other needs." But can you help us be a title sponsor? And he said, "Yes," because we do get money from other people, and we'll see if one of those groups will actually, you know, let us have the money, and we'll just let y'all have the title sponsorship. I'll do the welcome that day. I'm going to introduce a speaker, but we will be listed as the title sponsor for this year's annual meeting, which sends a message that we are very actively engaged in economic development.
Madam—Mayor, I appreciate that the funds, and I now wholeheartedly support the concept of it, but I guess I'm trying to see, as I hear and get solicitation from people who wants to—wants us to be sponsors, there's a value. Okay, this is—this is what it encompasses, and I'm hearing a segment of it. I'm just saying, if that indeed—the $20,000 sponsorship is indeed the value at which we will be presented to be a part of, we will be.
That is their prize for a title sponsorship and all that goes with it.
And all that goes with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Lynch, I believe, was next on the queue.
My question is, do we know the company that's paying on behalf of the city?
He did not tell me that. He did not tell me that. He just said, "We get monies from different organizations, and, you know, one of them is willing to do that instead of being a title sponsor, they'll let us have it. It's no money to us, but if we can be the title sponsor and get that—that public relations, I think it's good for our city.
Let's just make sure we know who it is, make sure it's not a hit group or something like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. And it looks like so—I appreciate everyone bearing with us. The queue is being updated now, and I can't tell—there. Okay, I think we're cleared out. Has anybody entered the queue that didn't get called on yet? Okay, great. Moving on. So, we're at introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to January 27th.
Ordinance Number One amends the 2015 River Fund Development Fund Budget. This is regarding the economic development personnel within the mayor's office. Ordinance Two amends the 2015 Community Development Fund Budget. This is a corrective ordinance that adjusts the numbers for summer jobs, NIP administration, and Old Galilee Museum to make sure that the correct amount is reflected there and not doubling. Ordinance Three amends the 2015 General Fund Budget. This is regarding the city attorney's office with the deputy city attorney position. Ordinance Four amends the 2015 General Fund Budget. This is the ordinance that provides a car for the mayor in lieu of a car allowance. Ordinance Five amends the 2015 Capital Improvements Budget, and this is regarding the Lake Street Railroad Crossing Project.
Okay. So, these are scheduled for introduction tomorrow, to be voted on for passage on the 27th. Are there any questions on these? If not, seeing none, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, just to add, we did receive a presentation from Mr. Thompson, saying that there may have been a question about the—specifically about the Lake Street situation. Has it—is there still a question about that that we—
There is, but, I mean, I think—I think it's okay to talk about introduction, but I think the question was—was about making sure that this is in line with the agreements that were spelled out during the discussions that we had, where we wouldn't commit funding until—
Exactly.
—their funding from the hotel had been committed, so—
And it is, Mr. Emerson. As a matter of fact, the mayor has—one of the things that we wanted to do was hold up on the agreement with the hotel owner until the new council, new mayor had been seated, whatever the appropriate term. Mayor Tyler's to be on that now. It'll come to the council for review, and this is the agreement that covers the contribution from the hotel owner. So, after you guys have a chance to review, the mayor has a chance to review it, then it will be executed, and all those things that were outlined coming up to this process will be in effect. The project is being started to start the clock. As you—the guys who are on the council recall, one of the things you want to be sure of is that we didn't delay getting that project going, because it triggers everything else: the railroad, the ownership, and everything else. So, the project is being created. The agreement with the owner will follow, and as you guys understand, if the owner doesn't act in accordance with the agreement, then the project can be canceled.
Right.
So, everything is in accordance with what was outlined during that process, but we wanted to get you guys the agreement, let you okay it, let the mayor okay it, then we'll get that one executed.
Good. And what might—maybe it'd be helpful if we can just provide a summary of the action that was taken towards the end of the year to make sure that the new council members are able to, you know, read over that and make sure that anything that we're asked to vote on this, they have a full understanding of how it lines up with what's already been voted on. So, that would be helpful. And, let's see, Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just had a quick question about ordinance four.
Yes, sir.
Reading the backup on it, I don't have a problem with what we're doing here, but just for clarity, that money will be coming from the reserves?
No, sir. Actually, the IT budget has some funding remaining from an obligation that we expected to enter into, didn't, out of the 2014 funds. So, that money is coming out of those remaining 2014 funds, so that it wouldn't impact the reserve going into 2015.
I just thought we had a few instances previously where we tried to use prior year money and couldn't do that.
If it's encumbered prior to the end of the year, and this was encumbered prior to the end of the year, that way, should the council agree to, and the funding was already available, then it can go forward, but it was encumbered prior to the end of the year. Yes, sir.
Okay, seeing no more questions. Last chance. All right, let's see. Let's proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage.
Ordinance 163 closes and abandons an alley to the east of Missouri Avenue and north of Greenwood Road in Block Nine of the Queensborough Annex in Section 10, Township 17, Range 14, otherwise provides with respect thereto. Ordinance 164 amends and reenacts certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances. There is one amendment. That amendment is primarily a corrective amendment that deals with some dates. Ordinance 155 declares certain paint acquired by the Department of Community Development for the Paint Your Heart Out Shreveport Program and the World Changers Program as surplus, declaring the city's intention to properly dispose of or donate the surplus paint to certain nonprofit organizations subject to certain conditions. This is a matter that basically was held over from 2014 that regards the surplus paint from this Moore's Department. Ordinance 166 closes and abandons a portion of the alley dedication in the 300 block of East Merrick Street in the Bowman Lane subdivision in Section 5. Ordinance 167 is zoning matters C-6814. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Pennick and Hearn Avenue, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, changed from B-1 Buffer Business District and R-2 Suburban Multi-Family Residence District to B-1 Buffer Business District with site plan approval. Ordinance 168 is zoning matters C-8714. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the west side of Centele Street, 370 feet south of Dalton Street, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R-1D Urban One Family Residence District to B-2A Business Park District with site plan approval. Ordinance 169 is zoning matters C-8914. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property bounded by Leadbetter, Earl Wallace, and Hickory Streets, Hattie Perry Recreation Center and Park, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, changed from R-1D Urban One Family Residence District to B-1 Buffer Business District for indoor and outdoor park facilities used with site plan approval. This is one of our city parks that needed to be rezoned. Ordinance 170 is zoning matters C-9014. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the northwest side of Mayfair Drive at the intersection of Fenwick Drive, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, changed from R-1D Urban One Family Residence District to B-1 Buffer Business District for indoor and outdoor park facilities used with site plan approval. Again, this is another one of our city parks that needed to be rezoned. Ordinance 171 is zoning matters C-9214. It amends Chapter 106 by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Milton Street and Murdis Avenue, Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, changed from R-1D Urban One Family Residence District to R-2 Suburban Multi-Family Residence District with site plan approval. And ordinance 172 amends the 2015 Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund Budget appropriating the funds authorized therein.
Okay. And so, when anybody has a question, go ahead and hit the request button. I do have a couple to start out with. On 166, I see that the MPC approved this some weeks ago, early December, if I remember correctly, but just wanted to see maybe Malcolm or whoever may be able to just give me any background. I have not heard any opposition to this, but I just wanted to see if there was any opposition that presented at the—any of you earlier. opposition that presented at the, at any of your earlier discussions on it, as the owners who are on either side of this, aren't the only owners on that, on that block.
Malcolm Statlander, property management administrator for the city. Mr. Chairman, this is a plot of that area.
They have the lots to the right side.
The church owns all of the lots to the north. These three lots to the south. This is a private owner in the very southeasterly lot. And his name is Mr. Darrell Anderson. And he is chairman of the Board of Deacons of the church. And he's actually the one that presented us with the petition. And all of the property owners have signed the petition. And as you said, Metropolitan Planning Commission approved this at their meeting in December.
So the petition, I suppose I'm concerned more about the properties that are on the west half of the block there. Are any of them impacted or have they been notified and contacted? Are there any concern?
I've gotten no concern from those property owners. No, sir?
No, they're a bye. I just wanted to verify.
None at all.
Were they, were they consulted? Yeah, I mean, they, were they contacted in the beginning?
They were not contacted by my office initially. Metropolitan Planning Commission, I don't know if they gave them notice or not, but as you are probably aware, a closure and abandonment can take place if the adjacent property owners petition the city to close and abandon that area. But as far as my office giving them notice, no, we did not.
That's what I'd like to see. If you could, if we could ask, there you are. Just want to make sure that if there is any access implications or any traffic implications that this might have, I want to make sure it hasn't been adequately expressed to the standing.
To answer your question, we did provide notification to the property owners, and we do that by legal requirement. So, and we received no comments or disconcerting statements about the closure and abandonment.
Good. Thank you very much. Additional questions? I think I have Councilman Jenkins and then Councilman Flurry. Do we, in those alleyways, do we use that for solid waste pickup?
Not there.
Not there. I mean, that, that would be my concern that
Stan saying no.
No, there are
See why I'm saying that? If you can't go through the deal, turn around, go in back.
There are some where that is the case, but not, they always review it before it even gets to this stage. And, Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I want to ask about 168.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
On 168, Dalton Street. This is the first I've heard of this. Was there any objection from any of the residents that could have gone from president to business?
No, there was not, that we are aware of, any complaints on that.
And you did mail out.
Absolutely. We have sent out notification. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, let's see, Councilman Jenkins.
164.
That had to lay over three times? This is the water? Okay.
Correct.
Say it's, there's no amendments to
No fundamental change, Barbara.
But that's all right. I don't think, I was just
Right.
I know we've seen it a bunch of times, but maybe it was a three reader or something. Okay, that answers my question. Okay. And, Mr. Sweeney, I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask you real quickly, if you could, because this is, I know this is sort of a new thing, to be rezoning some of our parks, and I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing here. This is a great, a great thing, and I hope everybody's ready to move forward with it. But I do just think, since it's sort of unusual, it's worthy to maybe get a brief explanation of what we're doing.
Sure. When you have to, in our ordinance now, we have to, in order for someone to do an indoor type of recreational facility, you have to do the B1 zoning. And so all of these properties are zone residential zonings, and so therefore they're being changed to B1. But I give that to you as a caveat, which I've been working with Shelley and trying to make certain all of these go through. The caveat is this, is that under the UDC that's coming forward, more than likely, the zoning for recreational purposes will be allowed as a matter of right under residential zoning. So I've asked her, in the future, that once the UDC is approved, that we'll go back and do a significant blanket rezoning of all the park facilities to residential, because the thing that looks odd is to have a, has a island of B1 in the middle of residential. So I get questions like, are they going to open up a business there? And I say, no, 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 that's a par. But it sends the wrong signal. But we don't have any choice under the current ordinance. When the UDC is reviewed and approved by this body in the near future, we'll go a different route on that and make it look more consistent and correct of what we want to do in terms of development.
So does everybody understand, this is for those parks where we're doing renovations, and it's in an effort to be in compliance with our current ordinances. We need to make this zoning change, but with the, you know, understanding that we'll be looking to change back to another type of zoning once it becomes available.
Yes, yes.
If there are any questions, let us know. Otherwise, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation for the council to consider?
No, not at this time, Chairman, that I'm aware of.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Chairman, wasn't there some questions regarding the Kirby request for Stephen Chase? That's been carried over for almost a year now, is that right?
I was going to ask if we can remove that off the agenda, but it was, but would you like to keep it?
No, I was, I tried to get in touch with, pretty Councilman Jenkins about it, but I didn't get in touch with him to speak about it, so I'm, I'm open to removing it myself. But I'd like to at least try to get in touch with him one more time today just to make sure.
At the, at the last council meeting where he was, councilman, where he asked that it
Stay over.
Remain on, so.
I don't see the reason why. I mean, I think most of the people
I mean, the question I would have is, have it went through the proper process and the residents have the opportunity to give a consideration? And they have, to your understanding?
Yeah, letters went out to, Malcolm, could you come up to? Letters went out to all of the businesses. I think it's just generally businesses.
In that area?
Yeah. And the ordinance requires that a certain percentage of all of the adjacent property owners would agree
Yeah.
to the name change. And I don't think that we ever got that percentage.
That's correct. The ordinance requires two-thirds, or 66 and two-thirds percent of a linear footage that abuts the street that the name is to be closed, sign a petition. And we don't have the exact percentage, but we're in the 30, 30 percentage range.
And that, that notice only went out once, or that petition to get those, to get those approvals only went out once?
We sent, we sent letters directly to them, asking them to either approve or disapprove. So, no, we have not sent out, sent out more of them.
And the, and the expiration, would that be a, an expiration on that, on that petition to get those names?
I don't think legally it is, but people may not expect it to be.
Okay, I mean, what I'm asking is, it's been a year. We only had a 30 percentile. What's the odds of us getting them to change their mind and we get that approval? And why do we keep carrying something over that, to me, has no opportunity to, to be, to be, to be implemented?
As I remember, I think there was one property owner that had a large linear footage amount that if they would sign, then it would
The church. It was the church.
So I think what they're saying is if the church signs, then they've not
I think the church has already
They've already signed, okay.
Yeah, it was a private owner, I believe, that had
The remaining.
It was a public name, street name. It was a
So obviously, we'll entertain whatever motions are to be made about that tomorrow. If you would like to reach out to
Yeah, I'll let that
That sounds great. That sounds great. Thank you so much, Malcolm. We appreciate that.
One question, Mr. Chairman, and I was conferring with Councilman Jenkins. I don't know, is, the church is the petitioner, is that right, for the change?
Correct.
And we were just discussing whether or not to offer the church the option of going ahead and dedicating the streets versus changing the name of the street. Is that, is that an option?
It's always
Okay.
Always available to them.
Councilman Bowman, if that would, I don't know if you can do it in 24 hours, but would you make that into our
Tomorrow, yeah, I'm trying to get that.
Because if not, then I don't see no reason for us continuing to carry something over that doesn't, doesn't seem to have the opportunity of passing. Because the residents, not because of us, but because the residents had agreed to it. Okay.
All right. Seeing no more discussion on that, I think we are ready for property standard appeals.
Good afternoon. Our first case is one that is in Councilwoman Lynch. It's in your district, 600 West 73rd Street. This is the way that the
And just so that everybody knows, so she puts the pictures
Oh, yes.
up on the screen so you can see the property that she's talking about. And packets have the detail, but
I'm sorry.
But the
Picture that she said
And they have, they're definitely working every bit of And they have the recent ones from today. Also, just as a, just as a point of orientation, I know since we're all a little new to this, under the property standards appeal, after you see the case number, you'll see the address, and in parentheses there, you'll see the district, the district letter, and the name of the council person for the district in which the property is. And then sometimes the owner of that property may live in a different council district or may live out of town, and you will see, if it is in a just different council district, you will also see, parentheses with that, notated behind the, behind the owner's address. So if there's any question about what those notations are on the agenda, that's what, that's what you're looking at. The property is in one council district. This particular owner happens to live outside of the city of Shreveport. But for instance, on the next case, the property is in one council district, and then the property owner also lives in that same council district, and they're both referenced there. All right. Looks like we're having a computer glitch.
I'll go to the next one. You'll tell me about it.
Should tell you about it. So, in this, just to give you an idea, so that's when the whole process starts.
About a year.
Yeah, about a year. Now, there's a lot of times that they can't do this thing in 60 or 30 days.
This is a house that, 602 West 73rd Street, and we have had complete compliance with the structure. The owner has remodeled the house, and we would ask Councilwoman Lynch that we would close this case.
For y'all to know, we do actually vote on these today. These are not for introduc, these property standard violations and resolution of those get dealt with on the
Chairman, I believe the motion would be to overturn the decision of
Yeah, if we could, the, the system isn't, isn't ready for votes, it doesn't look like.
I just can't see
Okay, so we'll wait a moment. Sorry for the technical.
Okay. So we're asking for the case to be closed.
Yes, so we may need to do a hand motion for this.
Your board was saying that the motion should be
To overturn the decision of the board.
To overturn the
And dismiss. And I will just say something, and we have to follow it, but customarily, whoseever district the property in is in, generally makes the motion on the determination. Say that's the 99%. On occasion, it's different.
Though it's not required.
It's not required.
And in this case
You ready?
Are you, are you ready for
Yes, I want to make a motion on PSD 1300040 to overturn the decision of the board and dismiss the case.
Second by the chair. And that's a 7-0 vote unanimous to overturn and dismiss. Congratulations. And congratulations
Perfectly done.
Congratulations to the property owner, too. That is a good bit of work that was accomplished. Glad to see
Is the property owner here? Is the property owner present?
No, he's not present. Our next case is in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' area. This is 360 East 68th Street. This property was cited September of 13. The owner wanted to demolish the structure. He has demolished the structure except for the wall there in the back. And as you can see, everything now is lying there over the property. The owner is not present here today, and
He's the gentleman that put up the fence in the beginning? Is that, is that this guy?
There was a fence already there, remember? And he was the one who came in. His wife had died at the time, and he wanted to demolish it, and we allowed him to do so. And he, as I said, he was here last month in Octo, not last month, he was here in October. But the structure has not changed. Nothing has changed since October to now. He was told to come back, and this is what it looks like now.
So, so what do you propose?
Recommendation is
What does one say? I mean, you can't demolish it, it's demolished. What is the
My recommendation is that property standards proceed with the demolition of the wall and cleanup of the property.
So if we, if we say it's a demolition, he'll get the 30-day notice?
He will get the 30-day notice to appeal to First Judicial District Court.
Do we currently have a, you got a demolition out there, do we have a property care premise?
Care premise, there is a care premise. Our concern right now is demolition of that wall. As we demolish that, that care premises has been implemented, and we will let that go through the system and see how he responds to it.
Okay. I mean, obviously, there's the obvious, there's a concern here, right? I mean, the wall itself probably doesn't present a huge hazard at the moment, though it would be objectionable if it lasted there forever and ever. So if that's the impetus to get him back in, obviously, y'all tried to talk to him and you haven't had, he hadn't responded.
That's correct.
In terms of the care premise on the actual pieces of material, building material that are left out there at the moment, that has not been noticed yet?
It has been noticed.
And when you're calling him or writing, and he isn't responding, obviously.
No, and as I said, he was here in October. He said he needed 50 more days. That was given to him.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to postpone, give you two more weeks to talk to him. I hate to just belabor this, but it is, it is at a point where I do feel that this person's intentions are correct. Now, whether it's financial or health for that gentleman, I'd like to give him two week, more weeks to get
Second motion.
There's a motion This is a motion by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Bradford. Everybody ready to vote?
What's the date on that?
Okay. Got all our votes in, and it's a unanimous 7-0 vote.
Two weeks. Our next case is in Councilman Bowman's area, 2407 Portland Avenue. This structure went before the property standards board in November. They gave the owner 60 days to comply. The owner is present. We are requesting demolition, but the owner is present here today.
Okay. Now, who's, is it in yours? This might be in mine. It may used to have been in District E, but I believe it's in District B. Yeah, it's mine now. That's okay, we'll, we'll both listen. It's near the edge of our borders, so we'll both...
2407 Portland?
I believe that is in District B now. We can double check it.
You think Portland?
Yeah, we both think that's correct. We'll double check on the map, but those new districts just... It changed. Those new districts just took effect, so we'll double check it. But it probably was in District G when the report was issued, and, you know, it's probably now in District B, but we'll move forward one way or another.
Okay. Well, this is Ms. Shepherd Wilson, and she's here to speak to you.
Good afternoon. I am here in reference to the property at 2407 Portland. It is property that my son has asked that, that I let him have the property so that he can make the necessary repairs to the property. I live in Richmond, Texas. This is my second visit in regards to the property. It looks horrible from the outside. My son started doing work on the house from the inside, and have made quite a few repairs on the inside, and is very interested in meeting property standards so that he can move into the house. And so we are asking for additional time to make those repairs. I was here in October, it may have been November I was here. I was here in November, and I was given 60 days. And included in those 60 days, of course, was holidays and the weather we were working against. Since, since I was here, it was trees all around the property, as well as almost on top of the roof. Those, those trees have been removed. My son had someone, someone to come out to remove those trees, so...
Are we talking about the trees that are piled up there on the curb?
The trees that are piled up, and also the, the picture of the trees that are in the back, I think that they've also been taken down. But I guess the pictures that you all, when you all took those pictures, those trees were still standing, so we've also removed those trees.
And has, so these pictures were taken today. Has a bulk collection been scheduled for those trees out there? Because those are non-compliant.
Let, let me let him speak on that behalf.
Yes, sir. Actually, I was supposed to have some people to get by there with myself over the weekend, but prior to the weather conditions, we wasn't able to do anything Saturday and Sunday because I drive trucks over the road. So I'm basically out of Shreveport from Monday through Friday. So the weekends are basically the only time that I'm actually able to get by there to see what type of work is done, and to actually be able to get some positive things done there on 2407 Portland.
Okay, well, I mean, this is what's concerning about this property is certainly, when we look at a property, obviously, property standards consider what the impact is on the surrounding property owners. This property, regardless of what it may look like on the inside, the outside most definitely does not meet property standards codes. And it's concerning to me that I have the two of you talking, one of you living out of town, the other one who is out of town five of seven days a week. You know, if we give 60 days, if we give 80 days, if we give 120 days, that amounts to, you know, four days, six days, or eight days. I mean, we're, we're talking about, you know, people who are, the, the, you know, if y'all are going to be the ones who are responsible for the work that's happening, and you're not in town, you know, I'm skeptical that this can get done. I mean, is there a plan for getting this done? Are you have some vacation time coming up that you're planning on mission this? Or is this going to linger on for quite some time?
Well, actually, I've already had some people to come out to give me estimates for it. And being that my prior obligations, court order child support, and financial obligations to my family, I was asking for an additional two to three months being able, that my finances might be able to equal up to where I can be able to get this done. But I don't want to keep putting money off into the structure, and it ended up getting torn down anyway. So that's where I'm at on that.
Well, that, yeah, that's, that's the concern for us, too. We don't want you to be putting a lot of money into a structure that you never get up to code, and then it still has to be torn down, and, and you will bear the cost of tearing it down as well. So Dorothy, what is the recommendation of property standards?
Recommendation of property standards, Councilman Efferson, is to demolish the structure. In the alternative, if you decide to give him an extension, this would have to be done on a month-to-month basis with him showing significant, significant improvement on the structure. The seals have to be replaced, all the rotten wood. We are talking about a major remodeling. So as both have previously stated, she's out of town, she lives out of town, the son works out of town. And looking at the complaints that we have seen, our recommendation is for demolition.
Ms. Jim. Councilman Brad.
Thank you.
And then after that, follow back Councilman Bowman.
I yield to Captain, Councilman Bowman, this is the area. Okay? I used to sit on the, sit in as a property standard hearing officer before the restructure happened. Demolition was always my last resort. I always wanted to give residents the opportunity to, to upgrade their property. Can I ask the owners, what's your intent for this property?
Well, my intent for the property is to revitalize it and to move into the property. I would hate for it to be tore down to a concrete slab. I would rather to revitalize it, to actually bring up the property of the community over there, and be able to live there and raise my family.
And I guess I'm asking that question, you will acknowledge the horrible outside appearance of it?
Yes, sir.
And that the, the issue here is the outside appearance. You started working on the inside. You've already put resources in that.
Yes, sir.
You know, I, I, I'm, I'm trusting that, that, that you will do that, but I want to say to the director, I was looking at all of the cases over the last few weeks. This case started, I think it was September. In most cases, linger for a year or more. I don't, according to the standard in which property standards has been, has been operating, it just appears to me that this one is being expedited a little more. And, and our appreciation to the T-bone operation that I experienced last week, I was wondering, is this consistent with, with the way we, and I know the process. I know it went through the notifications, and it went through the property standards board, and all now, but we, I'm talking about, according to some other cases, is that, is that timely, the way you think it should be?
What has happened of this case, and let me explain with others. We've written this house up many times before. We started with security, and it has progressively gotten worse. Now, when we cite a case, there is also notification. Sometimes structures, when we notify them, are responded quicker than others. That's what happened in this case. Sometimes we have to put it in the newspaper. There are several owners, so it's not so much as us expediting it. This case was done where the owners responded, appealed. That's not always the case in what we're doing, so...
And I appreciate that, and that's, that's the right answer I want to hear. But, you know, we, we've committed, I'm new here, and so are the mayor and some others. One of our campaign objectives, and what we convey to the public is that. We want a clean city. We want, we want to eliminate all the eyesores, all the dilapidation, everything that we can to show that we're living in a clean city. This, this does not fit that standard, and I want to be, again, if it's going to be livable, inhabited in a few months, I, I really would like to see that, but at the same time, we can't continue to prolong something if it's not going to be, if it's not going to come to fruition as it relates to this, this house being, being upgraded and livable. So I'm saying all that to say that the recommendation of the director, I think, would have to be very heavily considered unless somehow you can convey that some outside work would be, would be, would be done so that the outside appearance would be changed in a few months, and then go back to the inside. We just need, we just need that to happen versus continue to put reven-, I mean, put resources in the inside. That I think any outside improvement would show us in good faith that you are moving, moving toward that. Is that possible?
And, and that's our intention. Every time that I receive a letter from the city of Shreveport concerning the property, whether it needed to be secure, or the yard needed to be cleaned, whenever I received something, right away, we took care of it. This letter that I got in November was the, the, the letter that I got about the demolition. And of course, I responded right away. So we do want to save the property. We don't, we don't want to put the money and the effort into doing the repairs, and then the property get torn down. So I understand right now what you all are concerned with is the outside of the property. It's an eyesore. So we're asking for additional time so that we can take care of the outside, replace the wood. My son is not doing it himself. He is employing some, someone to take care of, of the outside.
Let me interrupt you one second, and I appreciate, I, I mean, I feel, I feel you, but at the same time, you're, you're living out of the city. He's on the road a lot. I mean, I mean, it does not give me any confidence that anything's going to happen timely. I mean, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, okay, we leave here, it rains tomorrow, he hits the road, he's gone for a week. He comes back, and he sleeps. I mean, the month's going to be over. I'm, I'm saying, I mean, there's nothing that, that you can offer us that will give us confident that if we extended some time, he asks for two months, is that, is, is, can something tangible be done in that time reasonably?
Look, here's what I may suggest. This is just what I'm thinking, because I don't want to belabor, you know, because it does sound like there may be some challenges to ever getting this done. But I do want to give you an opportunity if you have the ability to do it. So what I'm considering is maybe suggesting that we just postpone this two weeks, but make sure that they get with Dorothy and have a schedule of, of action. And, you know, if any of those points on that schedule of work aren't met, then we'll proceed with demolition. Is that something that you'd be agreeable to, Dorothy? You could sit down with them and talk what the priorities are of, you know, if they...
I, I can do that. I can do that, Councilman Efferson. I just wanted to remind you that when we sent the letter of notice, the conditions were on there as to what we were requesting that needed to be done.
And that was in September?
Yes. And that's what was, and nothing has changed. But I would be willing, at your recommendation, to sit down with them and discuss.
Okay, well, I haven't made that motion, but that was just something I was considering because it sounds like there's some interest in maybe seeing, seeing that happen. But next on there, I did have Councilman Bowman. If you still wanted to speak, then Councilwoman Lynch.
I personally take it back on Councilman Bradford. I think we, we're trying to get the standard to where Shreveport is better cleaned up and has that image of, of looking better than, than what it has in the past. And on the timing, on the past, that's been prolonged for over a year, we don't plan on, as a new council, a new mayor, we don't plan on holding off over a year and holding off on things to just be prolonged at, at that amount of time. So my question was, in the, in the past 60 to 90 days, what exactly outside of the trees, what exactly has, has been done on the outside?
Are you meaning from November the 18th? Because that, that's, I think that's when I, I last met with you all. I think it was...
November, November 1st.
Mm-hmm, since November the 18th. Outside of the trees, that's all that has been done. The trees were taken down because that was one of the, the things that they were asking us is to do the roof. We couldn't get to the roof until the trees were taken down. So that's one of the things they, they asked for. They, there was a, there was a beehive, a huge beehive on one side of the house. They asked that the beehive be taken down. They asked that the roof be repaired, and they asked that the structure on the outside, the rodent would be taken away. So the beehive, and, and we removed the trees. That's what has been done.
And so, and let's get on outside.
That's, that's, that's what we've done.
Councilwoman Lynch?
Y'all stressing me out. I made it through my first meeting. Okay. Let me ask, the origin of the complaint was, was it the neighbors? Dorothy?
Yes, and the, and the inspector also, but yes, we got complaints, yes, ma'am. They were wondering why hadn't something been done.
How, how did you all come to own this property? Is it family property, was it adjudicated or what?
I, I purchased the property in 1977. At the time, I was a, I was a single parent, and I purchased the property. And I, I lived, I lived in, on the property for years until I moved to Texas. I moved to Texas in 81.
All righty, and when was it last occupied?
2001.
Okay, and where do you live at now, mister?
I actually live at 8028 Aaron Place, Shreveport, Louisiana.
You said Aaron? Aaron.
A R O.
Do you all have any pictures of the inside work, the work that's been done on the inside?
Uh, no.
Uh, no, ma'am, not with me, but I can provide them.
And that work was done almost a year ago, am I correct? That work was done almost a year ago. It wasn't recently done.
So the interior work was done prior to the, prior to the...
Over a year ago before that work on the inside was done. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Oh, okay. Well, I, I think I kind of agree with you, Councilman Efferson, about, about the aggressive schedule. Maybe giving them a little more time. And, and I'm inclined to do that because there are houses in that area that people are living in that look like that. I think the problem here is probably primarily that it's vacant. And, and, I mean, if it's... I think the problem here is probably primarily that it's vacant, and, and, I mean, if it's been, if it hasn't been occupied since two thousand one, you know, I guess it's, that one could objectively think that maybe nothing's going to be done, okay? So, I'm, I'm in favor of giving them a little more time to get something aggressively done. Are you all going to, do you think you're going to be able to do that?
Okay, and I'll make the motion.
And I'm going out here on a limb, sure. I'll come to Texas and I'll come to you. I got Judge Jackie here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Being said, I'll, I'll make a motion to postpone till January twenty-sixth, and in that time, we need you to present, develop and present a schedule of when the work is going to be accomplished, and we'll rehear it at that point.
A second.
All right, we're going to motion in a second. Everybody can vote when you're ready. All right, that's unanimous passage seven to your, so y'all do it.
Those are all the cases that I have.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, and to the director, I, I pledge to you our support of, of what you're doing. I think the difference today is that this is my first time having the owners before me, but I don't want to undermine, and I want to send the wrong message to, to these absentee owners and so forth, that, that I'm going to be sympathetic, or this council will be sympathetic to, to actions that, that, that they're, that they're proposing to do when they've had ample opportunity to do them before they get here. So, property standard, upgrading our property standards policies and apparatuses is a, is an issue. We got to show a better image of, of our properties and our standards of this city, and I appreciate what you're doing, and I don't want to give you the impression that I'm at all trying to undermine your work and the work of your inspectors. We got to support you, and, but I'm hoping that citizens respond more graciously to your, to your letters and to your communications. That would avoid them coming here, but when they come here and they have ample time to, to respond and to do something in good faith to show you that they're, that they're, that they're taking your, your, your inquiries seriously, is what I want to see, and that when they get here, unless you, you know, and they can at least convince us that something is going to change from here forward, then I'm, I'm supporting your actions and your recommendations in your department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may just, one, one point of clarification, all the trees and stuff that were cut, I think the question was asked, I wasn't clear whether or not they had scheduled for a bulk pickup, or whether, it sounded like he was handling it himself.
I think they said they were intending to remove it themselves.
Okay, so I assume that's a part of the, the motion in two weeks, too? Okay. Thanks.
I mean, I, my intention is that they be fully in line with property standards.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
All, all property standards.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's all we have for property standards. It doesn't appear there's any ABO appeals, so we, I don't think we have any ABO appeals. There's no MVC or zoning appeals. Any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
Oh, sure.
All right. And so now, we are at reports from officers, boards, and committees. I'll start out by saying thank you to the council members. I did receive everybody's submission of what committees they're interested in working on, and I have a draft list of that. Pending a couple of questions about a couple, the nature of a couple of those committees that I'll run by art. We should have that final list by tomorrow, and so we'll have those committee assignments made very soon. Are there any other updates from any currently standing committees? Any questions about the committee process, or? All right, seeing none, we are at the most exciting part of every administrative conference meeting, and that is the clerk's report.
I have another question. There, there was some questions about one sixty-four, when we met the water and sewer rates, and I wondered if you would need the director maybe tomorrow to go over those?
That, that is a good question, and so we had asked, and I see Barbara's present, I don't know if the intention is to do that presentation tomorrow or today, but I think it would benefit some of the new council members to get a little bit more information on the ordinance, the, what is the number again, ninety-four?
One sixty-four.
Right, ordinance sixty-four. Yeah, glad I asked. Ordinance one sixty-four.
A brief on the changes, the chairman on, on the whole, the whole thing?
Well, on the changes with a little bit of background on what it is. If, if we could have that prepared and ready to share, particularly with those new council members, I think those of us who've been seeing it for a while, it's been on the agenda for a while, and it has been reviewed, but for the benefit of those members who are new to the council, we want to provide some background to them and let them know the context of that legislation.
I think there was, I don't remember if we got a PowerPoint, we got something in one of the.
Infrastructure.
There was a presentation that.
And maybe that would suffice as a read-ahead for, you know, without her having to redo the whole wheel or whatever.
Barbara, can we make that available to the council?
Just to send it to.
I mean, I still have mine, but that probably would be a good read-ahead at least for the.
And then as a part of her brief tomorrow, she can include comments about the, the restructure.
Great.
I think that would be helpful, just, you know, as they're, as they're casting what will be one of their first votes, it's always good to make sure that they feel confident and the knowledge of what they're, what they're doing there. So, I think all of us could, nobody doesn't benefit from a little refresher, but, but certainly those members who are new probably want to get a little additional background information. So, sharing that presentation, I think, would be right with the doctor order. Thanks. Anything else, Mr. Thompson? All right, are there, Councilman Jenkins?
New item under new business.
I guess we'll call it that.
Wait for that second.
I would like to request, and obviously not tomorrow, but if we could have Kent with in Elkhaw come and give us an overview of the I-69 route. It was supposed to be finalized kind of in September, October, if you remember, and we haven't gotten an update since then, and I kind of wanted to just know, I mean, that's a big issue, and I'd like to know where that kind of is, just to give everybody an update on it, and kind of see where we are more than anything else.
We'll give it to the mayor and schedule it. Do there are no communications on meeting?
Yeah, you know, whatever the next, whether it's two weeks from today or two weeks from tomorrow, depending on, probably better on TV if we can get it, just because more people will see it. So, I think it'd be good to get us all up to speed on that, and for the new council members that may have not seen much about.
Chairman, coupled, coupled with that report, if the director of Elkhaw will come, would be the status on I-49. I know they're in a phase zero study. Can he give us an update on where we are with that?
With the phase zero.
With I-49 as well, and I-69.
That would be helpful, thank you. Anybody else with any, anything else question-wise, or anything that you want to handle in administrative conference?
I do. Let me just say this, I think this is our second week as beneficial, the councilman and the mayor. I got access to my email server on Friday, and when I went in, I had a hundred emails.
Only a hundred?
Only a hundred, but it's gaining every day.
It makes you a small day.
A lot, there's a lot of challenges for us out here, for us as council people. Today was an example of where I'm going with this. I got up, I got a call from a resident saying they had, there was a big, big suckhole or pothole, it was a pothole, it was a, it was a, it was a bigger hole than a pothole in the middle of, in the middle of the street. I immediately went over there, I got over there about ten o'clock. I called, we have a wonderful mayor, she had the proper people to respond to me, and to that, and I considered it as emergency, and I stayed there. I'm like Jared Bowman, I have to work for a living, so I had to, I, I should have been back at my office taking care of some stuff, so I, but I stayed there for two hours, okay, with the department people and with the police, and we, we got that issue pretty much taped off, okay? And I was saying to myself, I mean, there should be some help from somebody, from the council division, you know? And I called the clerk, and I called the deputy clerk, and they gave me some great directions on people to assist. But I, my question is, in situations to where, I mean, we, I, I really, I'm, I'm excited and motivated to serve, having a full-time job and to issue, and to, and to, and to look at some of these issues may require, and I'm talking to the councilmen's and the council lady, may require some assistance in some way or another. I don't know what way or another, but, but we need to be responsive to the needs of our constituents, even if it's in our district, even if we don't personally have to, you know, should, we shouldn't have to be there, but, but there should be somebody that representing us to ensure that there's, there's, there's response and satisfaction to the, to the, to the immediate issue, okay? I know years ago, there was a, there was some type of community guy for the council. That position, I don't know if it's still.
Council assistant.
It's what now?
Neighborhoods, I think.
What did he do?
City council assistant for neighborhoods with Mr. Bird, you spoke of him.
I, I don't, I don't remember the guy's name, but I'm just saying, if there was somebody who, who was in the field to assist in some ways, I think it would, would be helpful that we can do that. And, and I just wanted to, us to think about that, because I'm going to bring it back up in a few, in a few, in a few months, or weeks, whatever. And then, Madam Mayor, we need, you know, we had this big street thing for, for months in the previous administration. I would like for us, you, your administration, your people, and the council people, however we need to, whatever we need to do, to identify revenue sources, to look at a schedule and implement street repairs to these much-needed streets. The street that we're looking at in MLK this morning is going to have to have some major repair, and I don't believe putting a Band-Aid on a shotgun wound. Street repair has to be an urgency for us, and I'm hoping that, that we can timely, you know, respond to, to the wishes of this, this citizen, because they're looking for us to do something in that.
If I may just make one comment, Mr. Chairman, actually, we're going to bring that progress report to you beginning when, is it next month?
Next month.
Next month. We will have a progress report, and also, we will be working with, through the council members, to come up with a strategic plan of how we will address streets. We've already begun that process, and I want you to know that we've been meeting with a lot of folk, we've met with some of you individually, but we are going to come up with something, but we're going to have a progress report on what we already have, what you all have already approved for funding, so that we can, you can see where we are. That's part of what we want to do with updates each month, twice a month when we meet, so that you can know exactly how to respond to your constituency when it comes to approvals that have come to you, and you've done it for funding, and, and where we are in implementation. But we also need, I know, to have a better plan, just from what I've been briefed on. So, yes, sir, we, we are working toward that even as we speak.
Oh, yeah, we had a wonderful mayor.
No.
Thank you. Thank you, and I have Councilman Flurry and Councilwoman Lynch.
Mayor Tyler, in regards to communications, I, I would like to encourage you to see if you can revamp the website, make it more friendly, and even on our Facebook, the city I see twenty-eight likes, that would be a great opportunity, like we had a blowout on a wa, a water line at one oh-nine Oak Ridge Drive, and that we could put that information on what's going on in the city, even announcements of things in SPAR and other things, but I would like to encourage you to see if you can get something done in that area, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, and then, Councilwoman Lynch?
Yes, I saw a few single million out in the audience, so I wanted to make sure to give everyone my new number.
Is that legal?
It's very legal. It's three one eight. I'm serious. Five three two, three three two six, my new city number.
Five three.
Three one eight, five three two, three three two six. Thank you.
All right, and on that note, hearing nothing else, we are ready for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Move to adjourn.